We have six public hearings tonight, but I was asked to announce that we will be selling Autumn Fest buttons in the back. If anybody wants to go and buy ten or twenty of them, they would be happy to sell as many as you want. So they'll be there for the duration of the night if you would like to see if there's still a dollar. How are we called public hearings?
19049, an amendment of the Code of Ordinances City Wood Sockit Road Island, amended C and titled zoning, Sections 15.3 and 16.7 regarding zoning board review fees.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this particular topic regarding the zoning amendment? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, if we could move to the next item.
19050, an amendment of the Code of Ordinances City Wood Sockit Road Island, amended C and titled zoning, zoning board review procedures.
Is there anyone that would like to speak on this topic? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, we'll move on to the third one.
19051, amended the Code of Ordinances City Wood Sockit Road Island, amended C and titled zoning, Sections 2, Section 12, and Section 18.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in regards to this zoning amendment? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
19052, an amendment of the Code of Ordinances City Wood Sockit Road Island, amended C and titled zoning, various technical changes.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this zoning amendment? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Motion made by Councilman Canoa, seconded by Councilman Ward. All those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it, and we will move on now with the regular meeting. Madam Clerk.
19 LC 29, application of licenses and renewal of licenses.
Council President.
Council Vice President, bring him.
I think a motion to renew licenses, we approve holiday license under renewals, laundry, dry cleaning, quarterly entertainment, we've got two licenses.
Motion made by Councilman Breen, seconded by Councilman Ward. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it, and 19 LC 29 is approved, seven to zero.
19 LC 30, public hearing, an application of first class victim license for Positive Vibes LLC of 1173 Social Street.
This is a public hearing for the business looking to operate at 1173 Social Street, Positive Vibes. Is there anyone here to speak regarding this? If you could approach the podium. State your name and address for the clerk, please.
My name is Marie Hayes. The address is 1173 Social Street, Wood Sockit Road Island.
Is there any, are you the, you have the applicant?
Yes.
Is there anything that you'd like to add to your application, or are you just here in case there are questions?
Just a question.
Okay. And you have nothing else at this point to add?
Um, no.
Okay. And if you want, don't leave it. I will ask if there's anyone else that wants to speak regarding this application, but you can have a seat at this point unless there are questions from the council when we get to passing.
Okay.
Okay? Are there any, anyone else that would like to speak regarding this application? Hearing none, let's go right to the next public hearing, and then we'll take up the two legisla, uh, two licenses together.
19 LC 31, public hearing, an application of first class victim license, Mapleville Farm, 40 Main Street.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in regards to this application? If you could please approach the podium, state your name and address for the clerk.
Casey Ryan, 5403 Highway, Mapleville, Rhode Island.
What was your first?
Casey.
Thank you.
That's busy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anything that you'd like to add to your application?
No.
You're just here in case we have a question. Okay? If you want to have a seat, oh.
I do have a question.
Councilman Canoa.
Um, thank you. The, um, the look of the application says Sunday through Saturday, June, unlike, sorry.
Okay. The application indicates, is that, am I reading correctly, Sunday through Saturday?
Yes.
The next seven days a week?
Yeah, so, um, we work out of El Mora's Kitchen, and sometimes they hold events which would require us to wonder, like, for their events in Wood Sockit, it really requires us to have a good place, and that's definitely it. So the hours that are, like, other, are like whatever event that they would hold, they ask their members to like, hey, who's interested in this? Work is going on, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this application? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Motion made by Councilman Breen, seconded by Councilman Ward. All those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed. On the made motion, 19 LC 30. Do we have any motions?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilman Breen, seconded by Councilwoman Sierra and Councilman Sushi. Comments on the Positive Vibes LLC application? No questions, no comments? All those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it, and 19 LC 30 is approved, seven to zero. 19 LC 31.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Canoa and Councilman Kiddus. Any comments regarding 19 LC 31?
Council President.
Councilman Breen.
Uh, could I bring the, uh, way back?
Yeah, yeah. Hi, sorry.
Hi. So I heard your response to Councilman Canoa, but it's not entirely clear here. What is, what's your, what's your business? Where are you?
So, um, we're a small family farm in Mapleville, Rhode Island. Um, we opened an account for a raise, the hub kitchen, um, like, uh, next to the work and culture camp. Um, and so sometimes they have events, like, I guess they have a break event from the office, which we couldn't do because we didn't have the, so that we could prepare food and for those kind of caterers.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
I have another question.
Yeah.
Why, have you had a little more?
I'm, 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 I just didn't know if I could help or explain it.
You have to state your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Emma Ryan, 544 3rd Highway, Mapleville, Rhode Island.
Go for it, huh?
I just, I didn't know if that answered your question.
Unless you have something to add.
No. I just didn't know.
It would seem like you have something to add.
We cater.
Yeah.
That's, that's why the, the hours. Did that, did that answer it?
Like, yeah.
It's a catering mindset, so.
No, unintended, but we took a long way around the bar. Thanks.
Good? Good? All right, we, yeah, okay.
Uh, I'll go on to your. I just want a further explanation. It's my understanding that the hub kitchen is just a, um, a food safety certified kitchen that multiple different caterers can work out of that don't carry that food safety certificate.
No, no, that's not correct. Everyone who works out in the nori kitchen has to have their own, uh, food safety certificate. Yeah, the, the manager of the nori kitchen has one, but that is unrelated.
But you don't have a, this just allows businesses a place to go if they don't have a kitchen that has been cleared.
A kitchen that's been cleared, yes.
A physical kitchen, yes.
Right, so is that better than helping, John?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it, and 19 LC 31 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck to both of you.
Thank you.
Hope it works out.
Thank you.
Citizens Good and Welfare. I would ask if there's anyone here that would like to address the city council, that you approach the podium, adjust the microphone so that we can hear you, uh, state your name and address for the clerk, and please keep your comments in good taste in under five minutes, please.
Councilor Richard Montero, 156 Pearl Street, Wood Sockit. I'd like to speak under Citizens Good and Welfare regarding the proposed resolution, 19 R 102, and, um, of a councilman who, uh, who drafted the resolution. I don't expect that he's going to withdraw it.
No.
Well, I was going to offer some snippets against each one of the.
Just one, sir, I just want to, you are not required to answer under Good and Welfare, unless you want to.
Thank you. Okay. I appreciate the answer, thank you. Um, I was going to offer some snippets against each one of the wherashes, but I think anyone that's read this manifesto already knows that all white nationalists, Black Panthers, Antifa, they're all extremist groups, and we don't need any socialist activist councilmen to waste time and effort on this topic, in my opinion. I was going to question why the resolution didn't highlight and oppose the killing of babies by opposing abortion, but I didn't, and I won't. I will explain in comment, though, on it, the, uh, the resolved section. Section one, I don't want any one of my elected council people to get involved in generalizations of this type of, uh, my word rhetoric. I think, uh, I think I know each and every one of the councilmen fairly well. I know that they don't support any activism that's radical. I know they don't support racism. The, um, I think, I think there's no merit and nothing to be gained by having this, uh, this type of a resolution before, uh, before the city council. I hope that the council has the common sense, and if it does receive a second, that it get overridden, and rather than debate it, um, and get labeled, if you vote against it, get labeled, well, then you must be a, uh, a white nationalist. Uh, I'd like to see it overridden with a table motion and just put it to rest that way. And, uh, and to the good councilman who took the initiative to draft it, I would defend your right to say what you have to say, right to the wall, my friend. I would. I'm just totally against it. I think there's no need for it, and I don't, and I think there's other more pressing things to be said and to be done in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council?
Council President, members of the city council, good evening. My name is Paul Marchant. I live at 360 Farbahn. I'm here to speak against the proposal for the charter school, Nuestro Mundo, that has made an application to the Department of Education. I'm not here tonight to speak about how the dual immersion Spanish and English school is going to work, and I'm not going to speak about how it disregards all the Asian population in the Avenue City, some of the Eastern European nationalities, and other nationalities that it doesn't address. I'm also not here to discuss the special ed, uh, education that they're not going to be supporting because that budget shows they're only going to have $20,000 in their first year of operation. But I'm here to speak about the financial impact of this proposed charter school. Upon reading a hundred and fifty page document, I found their five year plan sitting around page 140 in Exhibit G. And in that, it shows me that Wood Sockit, along with three other communities, will be enrolling kids in the school. This is what they think. Eighty percent of those children are, are expected to come from Wood Sockit. And the first year, you're looking at 111 children from Wood Sockit are expected to be in that school, which will be a K to two school, kindergarten, second grade. And each year thereafter, they're going to add a grade, third, fourth, fifth, sixth. By the end of the fifth year, they'll have K to sixth. They plan to add a seventh and eighth after that. When I look at this, it's another drain on our very tight budget that comes from both the city and the state. And I know the city council is very aware of where the school committee and the school department sits, where our numbers at is being shared, and with you. In the first year, it looks like we're going to lose around $500,000 in cash that's going to be paid directly to the school, plus we're going to lose a million dollars in revenue. And this is going to keep increasing until year five, we're going to be somewhere around four and a half, four, four and a half to four point eight million, in the hope. The city council was very generous this year in increasing the schools' maintenance of effort by 250,000. We thank you again. We're very happy that you've done that, and we've got a good partnership going. But in the first year of Nuestro Mundo's operation, that 250 is going to be blown out, as my factoring based on 500,000. We cannot afford this, this school. In the first year, I noted that their superintendent or executive director position is going to be paid 160,000 for 100 kids. Our superintendent gets paid 153,000 for 6,000 students. So we in Wood Sockit are funding our superintendent in the public school at 153,000 with 6,000 children, and this school is going to have us pay 160,000 for 100 kids. Incredible. And year five, it'll be 300 Wood Sockit kids, and he'll be paid 175,000. This budget doesn't add up. As a matter of fact, why dilute the Wood Sockit School Department when working so hard to improve programs, to bring in the professionals that we need to not deal with just the regular classrooms, the special ed classrooms, oh, yes, and the English language learning programs, where we are dealing not only with Spanish speaking children, but children who come from all over and, and don't speak English? So I understand that we do have a meeting at Harris Hall, uh, Harris Public Library, and that's why I'm really here tonight, because you folks have received a letter from us, the school committee. A lot of folks here, me and I, certainly have not received that letter, and may not have seen it in the paper, or on Facebook, or have not been privy to this letter. But Harris Public Library is having a public hearing this Wednesday at 6:00. I invite all of you and everybody you know to go there and flood that library and give us, give them comments that, tell them that we can't afford this. Whether or not theoretically it would make sense, hypothetically, that it would be a nice addition. It's like adding a set of mirrors to a truck that are already just full of mirrors. We don't need the added look. We don't need any additions. What we need is continued help with, from, to our public schools, to continue to make them great, to make them even greater. The school committee, we have 6,000 children that are our own. Frankly, all of us have these 6,000 children. They belong to us, and we need to take care of them as best we can. And so I implore all of us to go to that meeting as best you can, to state your opinions and let's keep in Sockit's form. Thank you.
Donald T. Burke, 59 Edmyst Street, and I am also vice chairman of the Wood Sockit School Committee. I'm not going to speak at length, but I do want to just echo again what Chairman Bogue had to say. You know, I'm beginning my 45 years as a teacher. I taught 20 years of public school. I taught 25 years of private school. I know what publication, the public education is. I know what private education is as well. And when I read about this charter school that comes to Wood Sockit, to me, it smelled like a private school. It's a selected group of students that are going to be invited to become part of it. It's not open to the whole public of Wood Sockit, and to me, that's a problem. Also, it makes, you know, the charter school may help 300 students as it brings it into its school environment. But that means that 5,700 students in Wood Sockit are going to suffer, because we're going to have to have some cuts, we're going to have, we're going to lose money to this, to this charter school, and I don't think it's fair to the 5,700 students left in Wood Sockit. So I'm going to echo Chairman Bogue's remarks, and invite people to please come Wednesday to the Harris Library, it's a talk, to voice their thoughts about this charter school for or against. I mean, I'm all for, obviously, finding the best education for children, but I don't think this is the right thing. Wood Sockit, this is the fourth charter school coming to Wood Sockit. Uh, I find that troubling that here we are, a community that's really trying to make some improvements, make some inroads in our education, and we are, all right? We are doing that. If you look over the last several years, there's been a number of improvements, and the charter school comes in, and it just, just takes them in that way. So once again, please come Wednesday to the Harris Library, mostly concerns, and thank you for listening.
Good luck.
Thank you.
At 6:00.
Now, on more of a mundane note, Jerry Taylor, 16 Pearl Street. It is safety related, and I've been told this is the appropriate forum from which to voice my concern. So it's the Globe neighborhood, and, uh, there is a, the intersection of Andrews Street and South Main Street. And there is legally the, um, ability for one to park on Andrews Street right up to the corner where T's and with South Main Street. I am frankly amazed, surprised, pleasantly surprised, but I'm, I'm very surprised it hasn't been an accident. Uh, I think it's an accident waiting to happen. I live off of Andrews Street, a couple of blocks in. Just the other day, last weekend, I was coming home and was wanting to take a light onto Andrews from South Main Street, and there were people on both sides of Andrews right up to the T parked, and so I had to wait, and someone was getting out of their car, you know? You have to kind of, you have to put the brakes on, and I think the, if, of most, most concern would be a pedestrian getting, getting hit. But also, I think it's a rare end waiting to happen, particularly from South Main Street. Uh, so, uh, I wanted to say my piece. I, I hope this is the right appro, uh, appropriate forum for that. It's rather mundane compared to the previous gentleman's concern. I appreciate that. Anyway, it's, uh, for a couple of years, I've been wanting to find that, that city council meeting and inquire, and, um, just to say my two cents.
Well, glad you found your way here. And Chief, could you ask, uh, the Public Safety Director to look into this intersection and see, um, if, if it needs any legislation to make it a safer intersection? Thank you.
I did leave a message with, uh, I was told when I called, uh, the town hall that it was a police slash safety issue, and to call, uh, the police department, and they rooted me when I did to the lieutenant of, of safety or something like that, and I left the message. So I did do that part, too, so.
Believe it or not, tonight you had the air of the chief.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Megan Ever. I live here along with my mother, it's on Calum Street. Um, I was raised here. I owe you guys a thank you. You approved my suicide prevention event in Sockit, and I didn't even make a city council meeting, and I really appreciate that. That shows how much you actually care about the community, and that's a help. I brought you guys treats, and I really hope you can accept them. Just thank you to Alex. He showed up and supported me, and I, I respect what he's doing over the community. I respect what he's doing within the Green Deal. That's really important. The future is now, and the future has got to change. We have a huge change in urgency, or a fight in it. I'm sorry I have anxiety, and also I'm really sick today, so I'm going to try and get through this without passing up. So, uh, as a member of Wood Sockit High School, I also switched. I went to Beacon Charter for a year, honestly. That school saved my life. That school was so amazing. Compared to Wood Sockit High School, there was only about 150 to 200 students there, and in Sockit, there's about 5,000. You can't stay 5,000. Sorry, he is the one can, it doesn't work for some people. I had a panic attack today. I was sent home in the beginning, so it was everything in my school. As soon as I went to Beacon Charter, that changed. So, you know, just keep that in mind. It's something to think about. Um, also, I had a few other things on my mind, can't really think about it. Um, white nationalism, as a president, from African American, Portuguese, French, and Italian, Native American descent, is an issue. I can see from all sides of the looking glass. It's something that everyone should come together and really talk about. It's not something that, to be aggressive, or to feel some sort of self-consciousness or something, or some sort of guilt. You just have to acknowledge that there has been suffering, and there has been people that have suffered from, um, uh, the way we have, the society, the way we've been coming out of it. I mean, I think this day and age, we are really, um, coming to a stance, so I think we can actually respect each other, and as long as we listen to each other and hear each other out, that I think we can really make a huge change. And we just have to understand where everybody's coming from. You just have to walk in other people's shoes, you know? Really think about it, and put yourself in their place, because some people, you know, they just, some people don't understand, if you, but you really, really look at it, it is mirror images of each other. So, you know, I don't know if that's a little too deep, but thank you for letting me speak. I, I appreciate you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Cindy Haddis. I live at 1027 Park Avenue. We moved there about 16 months ago. My husband and I combined homes with my father, who's eight years old. But a month, less than a month ago, we found this ordinance paper, um, outside on a telephone pole, the sign of no parking due to the snowstorm. Now, we have on-street parking. We don't have an option for off-street parking. The sign that was about the snow, ban, the parking ban for snow was down, and I have pictures of the sign that was put up, and it says, no parking here at the corner. But that corner is to our driveway, and it says on the letter that the people on Mallory Street requested assistance with the, um, outgoing of that street onto Park Avenue. But we've been here 15 months. We've had several accidents happen on that, in, during, in that intersection. But for my, I went to the Department of Public Works, they said they didn't know anything about it. I went to see, um, Lieutenant Coviero, he said he knew nothing about it. They pointed me here because, um, Councilman Gendron signed this ordinance, so they told me to come to the next council meeting, so here I am. But by signing this, we wasn't notified at all as parking, um, Park Ave tenants, that we pay full market rent. We don't have any kind of assistance. We pay $1,100 now for rent, and all our parking is gone, all of it. It's all here. And the, the original pole that was there, it said, no parking here at the corner. We're certainly in the right place, at the corner of Mallory Street. That pole was taken out of the ground, and I have pictures of the hole being filled with cement, and the sign being put way back past our driveway and eliminated all of our parking. Even our next door neighbor's parking has been eliminated. So if we have company, they're going to park down the street and walk up the street to get to our house.
Well, I will, um, I do remember that. I was trying to look up when we passed that ordinance. I do know that it was a, uh, we don't make those judgment calls at the council level. Um, we are usually working with the Public Safety Division, and they give us guidance as to what they need to make an area safer, as the previous gentleman commented. So we can look into it, and I can find out what story, but there was, I know there was some passage of, uh, legislation to restrict parking on Park Avenue because of issues getting out from Mallory Street. So I don't know the details, but I can, uh.
Well, I know the details because I lived there, and I lived there for 15 months. And I'm telling you, I had pockets for 15 months.
No, I understand what I was referring to. Not many details in the ordinance.
It don't match up. Talking about a pole 5757 don't even exist anymore. And there's three 52s.
Well, we will certainly ask the Public Safety Director to look into it.
Okay.
All right?
When am I going to know something, or Park Ave residents?
Well, you know what you can do if you want to give your name and number to the police chief, uh, because I will be communicating with the Public Safety Director who's not here tonight, and he can pass him, your number on to the Public Safety Director, and then you can be involved, uh, if there's any discussion that will take place with, with the Public Safety Director, he'll have your number.
Okay.
If you step out, I'll take your number.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anyone else I would like to address the city council?
How are you all doing?
My name is Vaughn Miller. I live at 780 Park Avenue. I'm here tonight to, to the resolution to condemn white nationalism, or the white nationalism statements that were made on, uh, you know, public radio earlier. Um, I, I'm not using public speaking, so bear with me a little bit here. I'm going to try and keep this as brief as I can. Um, I think it's important to remember that white nationalism is.
You have to talk into the mic.
Understood. Can you all hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That white nationalism is essentially a dog whistle for other more insidious ideologies. It is often based off the tendency of racism, discrimination, and frankly, without exaggeration, Nazi ideology. I think that it is important to condemn these statements, because if we don't, we are essentially giving carte blanche to these people to espouse these sorts of ideologies without ever having it. And it's one thing if it was just a civil disagreement on laws, if it was a disagreement on, you know, any civil dispute you can imagine. But this is discrimination at its very core. This is something... Yeah, this is, this is, this is an excuse for hatred. And I think it's important to remind them that this is not okay, not in our city, not in our state, not in our country. That's all I'd say.
Thank you very much.
Hello folks, my name is Eric Hope.
Sorry, speak loud.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily from Stockton, but my friend Alex on the council made me aware that he was taking our time to talk about climate change and that something down, very loud voice around, I think it's like an, I think it's probably under the cover. City, so we have to act like, this is like citizens of the world, and we have to take the accountability for this. I also feel too, it's not like a figure in someone's imagination, this isn't a sci-fi movie, like this is stuff that's going on in the world right now, like people Google, bitches are feeling, and like, it's literally like, and I, and it was like, a better life. So those are things that we have to address, and I feel as though like, Alex is really courageous in championing that cause, and trying to make Stockton a city that's gonna be like kind of forefront of that. I'm also very young too, and I also get told that I'm very naive and all that stuff, but at the end of the day, there's a lot of people in the audience at the council who are considerably older than me. I feel as though like, this is a world that I'm greater than here at the end of the day. And like, we're going to see like, these things like take effect, like flash floods are real, you know? Last year, there was five category five hurricanes, like more, at least five category five hurricanes, like that was a record. Every summer on record since like 2017 has been a record hot summer. Like, these are things that are like public information, and Google search will clarify anybody who's like questioning that. So it's not about who's on this side of the aisle or that side of the aisle, there's an actual issue here, that can, that is like letting all our livelihoods, and I feel as though like, we should just put the politics to the side and try to figure out an actual sustainable solution for everybody, because everybody's gonna be affected by this. Even me, I don't have children yet, but I'm afraid to have children in this world where I don't even know what tomorrow is gonna bring, you know? Maybe some of you people on the council have children, have other relatives, everybody gets affected by this, you know? We're so used to, in this country, pinning two ideologies against each other, and what we fail to realize is that those are just like talking points, you know? Like, whether you represent the political left or the political right at the end of the day, us, you believe, we both believe, you know, that's a fact, we cannot escape those things, but all human beings have our voices in this community together. So if we take like a little bit of time out to just like put our differences to the side and see what like scientists from all sides of this debate are bringing us, is that we have a limited time to act. The ocean is heating up to degrees, like it takes 100 years to clean out the ocean. That's not what I think, that's a fact, you know? So like, it's very frustrating when we have like people who are like trying to put us on the right path for sustainable clean energy, and there's a bunch of people who are like counteracting that, you know? I'm not here to pick sides of the battle, I just know what the facts are that are presented to me. We have a limited time to act, and the fact that I have the young councilman over here who's like, you know, taking the time and effort to do stuff for that, to have people that come at him and attack him, I don't think that's good, you know? Just hear the young man out, that's all. And that's my whole piece.
You too.
I just want to briefly talk about quality of life issues in Stockton, noise, and speeding. As a Menden Road resident for 28 years, I have to say, when we first moved there, it was pretty quiet, that's before Route 99 opened. As soon as 99 opened to connect the highway, Menden Road became a shortcut for trucks and other vehicles using Menden Road as the shortcut from 99 to Beltonham, Franklin, and Interstate 495. Now the traffic is non-stop, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. On a typical weekday, there are at least 60 big trucks, 18-wheelers, oversized dump trucks, the size that I've never seen in my life. They're hauling crushed stone from quarry in Lincoln to some processing plant in Blackstone. All of these vehicles don't stop in Stockton. They just use Stockton as a shortcut right in front of my house and everybody else who lives on Menden Road. There are about 60 trucks an hour. I've done the research, I've counted the crazy trucks, so take my word for it, on average, 60 trucks an hour, in addition to everything else that goes by the house on Menden Road. Yeah, oil tankers, gas tankers, you name it, cement trucks, they're all going somewhere, but they're not stopping in Stockton. Now, a week ago yesterday, on a Sunday, and the Sunday prior to that, we had an added disturbance in noise in East Stockton. About 7:00 till 11:00 at night, there was a car show at Stockton Plaza, made up of these low-rise vehicles that are about six inches off the ground with illegal mufflers, okay, making a lot of noise, not like a buzzsaw or anything, you can call it what you want, but extremely loud. They were racing up and down Menden Road for, I'd say, four hours. This is a week ago yesterday, and two weeks ago yesterday. And this went on all night. And I heard that the show was sponsored by a Providence Autopark store, and it was advertised on social media. Now, what really irritated me is that I was told City Hall and the Police Department gave the car show their seal of approval. Now, it's easy for you to give it your seal of approval if you don't live where all the noise is. So I suggest the next time we have a car show, maybe we can have it in the North End on Prospect Street. Or we could send it to the police chief's neighborhood wherever he lives. Okay? I'm sick and tired of the noise, and as a resident of the city my entire life, I'm insulted nobody asks me my opinion, because this car show would buy my house for four hours on the first Sunday night, and four hours on the second Sunday night. So I'm asking my elected officials to not allow this type of nonsense and disturbance in the future. Thank you.
Just a question, I would simply say that going forward, I think we should find out if maybe you have an opinion.
Yeah. You're right.
I'm Garrett Benser, 372 Palm Street. First things first, I want to wish my city clerk a happy birthday, and I just want to say that he's... I think you're doing a great job, and I'm very proud to be one of the people that gave you that appointment back in 2015. So a couple of things about Onafest, we've got, it's a common fast and furious, and I definitely want to thank the Jable family for selling lines at the back of City Hall. I think took advantage of them, they made lots of people, so hopefully people will purchase those on the way out. But I do want to remind people that we have the Onafest Grand Marshall deal coming up on September 28th. That's gonna be 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at Sabini's Palme d'Aréval, and it's to honor actually wonderful person in our community, and that's Lisa Costacaro. We're very proud to have her as our grand marshal this year, and we hope that you all will come. Take us at $25 per person, $25 a couple, and they're available on our website, which is www.onafest.org. I also would like to invite the public and also all elected officials to our opening and closing ceremony for Onafest. It's gonna be held a little bit later and a little bit earlier, so I wanted to give you the dates and times, which is gonna be Saturday, October 12th, at 12:00 noon, which is the opening ceremony. And the closing ceremony is gonna be Monday, October 14th, at 3:45 PM. And we're doing that, hopefully there's a little bit more people in the park than at the very, very beginning and at the very, very end, so that's the reason why we pumped that up. I'd also like to testify in favor of the 11th amp Stockton Resolution, which is 19R100. This is the second year that we were able to do it, and we'll be applying for the third year, and DWC is proud to partner on this application with New World's, Boston River Valley. And after we go, does a great job writing the grant, and we're looking for a letter to the board from the city with this resolution, which is due on Friday, so that's the reason why I had some agenda for tonight. I also would like to have a change to 19R105, that's moving on Main, that's a new thing that we're trying to do with the downtown group, we're trying to promote just more commerce on our downtown area. We originally requested October 9th, but we like to change that date to October 24th. So if you can make that change, we don't want to conflict with another downtown event, and that's why we want to change that. And I'm also here again to testify in favor of 19R105, which is parenting us permission to have the 10th annual Stockton Main Street Holiday Stroll. This is an extremely popular event, especially with the local business owners, they really rely on this event to bring in new traffic into their businesses, and certainly let local families look forward to it every single year. I will say that I'm a little frustrated, because the original request was August 5th, and now we're here today on September 16th, and that definitely puts us behind with the planning process, and certainly we're reaching out to sponsors. We tried raising anywhere between $7,000 to $10,000 every year, and now we're behind. So I really would have hoped that that would get passed a long time ago. Certainly, all of you know that I make myself extremely accessible by email, by phone, and if you have any questions, you can definitely reach out to me before the meeting, but I was a little blind inside that the last meeting, where I didn't know that it was gonna be tabled, and it's gonna be tabled for a month and a half, it's very unfair to modernization and the people that really put a lot of effort into the end of this event. It did come up at the meeting, previous meeting when I wasn't allowed to speak, but it was stated that the city administration does no longer have a designated meeting on the board, and I want to say that that is not true. We have never removed anybody from the board, whether it be the event committee or the actual regular board. The mayor's office retains a spot, and I have requested a meeting to find out who it has needed, because we haven't had any attendance at the meetings since 2016. And I'm also a little disheartened that I, at the last meeting, it was said that there was gonna be another city holiday event. I don't know exactly what that is, I have no details as to what that is, but I only know that there was a plan for them, even before our event, which I think is fair, and not really working in the best interest of the people of Stockton. I mean, we are called the Downtown Stockton Collaborative, we want to collaborate with everybody, and I don't think it's fair to have competitive events, but that also was part of the meeting that I hope to have. I hope the mayor had it definitely, apparently, so I'll respect that, and hopefully we can meet in the near future. But I just want to say that I'm very proud of my volunteer board, all of my leadership team is here, and I have all of the members of the board, because we want to show you how important these events are, and how important City of Stockton is to us. So we want to continue to do positive things in Stockton, and we want to have a good partnership with the city to do that. So my last request is that you can bump up, if you can bump up 19R100 and 19R104, 105, simply because we already attended a city council meeting for three hours, and then I went to another work session for another hour, so now that I don't want to spend time with you, but certainly that's a lot of time, so I would hoping that you would bump those up for my board at 10. Thank you.
You too.
Melissa, wire 268, Prospect Street. Congratulations, Mayor Arteta, welcome to the break.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight as my position of DWC vice chair, and on your agenda tonight, obviously you know that you have multiple, two requests to use city property, but I mainly want to speak about the Main Street Stroll. As our director said, it's been six weeks since our initial request was tabled, and I know that there were some questions surrounding the composition of our board, but I'll get to that in a moment. Our stroll is actually in its 11th year this year, and as you can probably imagine, there are very many moving parts that have to happen to make this yearly event a success. It also takes a tremendous amount of time, outreach, and planning by our all volunteer committee, not all of whom are necessarily DWC members. So now the clock is ticking for us, it's well into September, and in order for us to bring the community the kind of event that we really want, we really need to start as soon as possible. And all of that planning is ultimately contingent upon your approval this evening. I'd also like to remind you that the stroll has always been, and will continue to be, a free event for the community. Literally thousands of individuals, children, seniors, entire families, your constituents, look forward to this event every single year. To be honest, we've already had several people inquiring about details of the stroll, so that they can start planning while in advance. Now, in regards to the composition of our board, because I understand there were some questions surrounding that, we are comprised of small business owners, investors, longtime downtown residents, and Main Street enthusiasts. Every one of our members is a volunteer, and they volunteer their time. DWC is a nonprofit entity. We are not, and always try not to be, a political organization. We are community-driven collaborative, and we have seats at the table for everyone. At our last meeting, we discussed that we need to do a better job about informing the public about who we are and what we stand for, and we are gonna work on that. We specifically rewrote our bylaws to be accommodating, and by expanding the city's seat at that table to include the mayor or for designee. And we fully realize that the dedicated people here at City Hall who work hard every day may not have, always have the time to attend our meetings, and that's okay. We also realize that partnership with the city is crucial to our collective success, and I want to take this opportunity to thank the city and the council, and everyone for making our dinner on the bridge a collective success. We truly could not have done it without the efforts of the entire community. Although the stroll committee is under, but separate from DWC, we have always had someone as a designated city liaison, and I hope that answers any questions that you might have, certainly I know the questions that you want to ask them. But in closing, I respectfully ask you to approve our request to use city property for the 11th annual Main Street Holiday Stroll. Thousands of eager patrons await your response. Upon finding out that there might be a competing city event, many of our members were actually, said that they were heartbroken, so we are absolutely open to partnering with the city to work together to make this single event the best in ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Adam Renetti, 24 Alvin Court. I apologize that I don't have my normal five-page text speech to see at this time, but I just landed from charter on one and came right here. I want to speak, I have a couple of different things on the agenda tonight. I would, I'm not gonna say much about 19R102, however, if you put the tax about me on video shows, you'll know where I stand on that, and my support for council committees, and for very important issue to light. I would also like to encourage you to support 19R100 for the 11th amp concert series. As a production manager of that series for the past two years, it's been fantastic to see the power that this series has, and the small businesses that are supported by the series, and in terms of for us, and you can see the power of black music brought out every single week of the summer. And lastly, 19R105 for the Main Street Holiday Stroll. I have been a member of Downtown Stockton Collaborative for the past five years, and I'm the... of town, which is a boost to our local economy, boost to local businesses. We partner with the Polis Express, we partner with a lot of different people and businesses on Main Street and the downtown Waukesha area. Councilman Denver, Councilwoman Sierra, you are also on board with us on committed planning of this event and I know you guys are very committed to this event and see the magic we can create every year and I hope to continue working with you on the future of these events. So just in closing, I want to just thank everyone for the past support and hopefully for the future support of the Holiday Stroll, Levitt Amp and Levitt Amp Concert Series. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andrea Chamberlain, 169 Moorey Street in Waukesha. Well, first I want to say again, congratulations, Councilwoman Kipnis, nice to see you sitting at the table. But I do hope that when I was looking at the agenda for tonight and I saw the Green New York or Green Initiative, it made me think that Waukesha's heritage of being an industrial city could be put to the use. And I know that a lot of people tend to crown it on it. And it's too much money, there's this, there's that, there are lots of reasons why not and no other good reasons of what we could do in this city that could bring businesses and bring back industry into the city that was thriving, that my grandmother and grandfather were happy when it started. I might not have been born in the city and lived your entire life like some other people, but I did graduate from Waukesha High School. Mr. Vachon was actually at Providence College when I went to get my bachelor's degree. I mean, our own school, we have a master's degree in sustainability. It's something that's so important now and even as an older person at least, I think that I'm still really young, that this city could do something to help change, mold and envy and do something good and useful that would bring revenue and businesses and people back to the city. Because when I died through, it's not even the same city it was when I was a kid living here. I still live here, I have a long warranty, but when I was a young child and see it thriving. So to see it go back to the pictures that my grandparents had of what the city was and could be again by harvesting renewable energies and bringing up camp farms or building material supplies or solar farms, of which there's 10,000 of, if you drive eight miles down the road to Oxford, that we have the space and the ingenuity and the, I know we have the people and the sources to do it in the city and I'd like to see it get serious consideration. And I will be here every time you mention it, if you need help, because it means that much to me to stay living in this city and it's going to be awesome in this city. And that's really all, I wish if you'd say you'd see it on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council or anyone else?
Shirley Robinson, 719 Front Street. First and foremost, I'd like to say to the police chief, it's nice to see a lot of police presence here. Hopefully we can have that every council meeting. I seen like recourses out there, I was wondering what was going on. Nothing?
No, as far as I know.
Nice to see you here.
As far as I know by myself, but there was a sergeant there before.
There is someone still out there. Well, that's good. I'm so happy, we need police protection at the council meetings. Thank you. But anyway, Mr. President, may I present to the city clerk, Miss Beautiful Christina, she is celebrating her birthday today, September 16, 2019. I'd like to present some flowers to you, Christina. I did not make you honey, so happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job.
That was a very nice show.
Nice fashion.
Good evening. John Reynolds Jr., 1240 Downing Road in Waukesha. As you've all seen by now on projo.com, Facebook, Twitter, there is an article in Political Scene that really upset me and I'm not going to go into detail to explain like everybody knows about it right now. But I will say this, Christina, number one, I don't even know what your birthday is today, happy birthdays. Number two, to have the mayor besmirch a professional, erudite, forth-wit city clerk as what we have right now is beyond abysmal. You are by far one of the best city clerks in Miami. This coming from a guy whose dad had that toast, as you know. You and I, I'm going back a long way, haven't we? Let me tell you something, no one thinks you have dinner if you're God when you want, no one else. Got it? Good. Just saying, Mr. Trump. Number two, Mr. Kipnis, congratulations on your election. You know, shortly after your election to the city council, you appeared on up front on WNIY requesting a private audience with the station owner and host of the program. You had the door shut, not accepting phone calls and demanded you announce what you prefer to as white nationalism. This was due to a discussion during the John Dion program where you seemed to misunderstand the true meaning of nationalism, therefore propelling yourself to dictator-like demands. It seems that socialists across the board seem to enjoy bastardizing the English language as perpetuates your sitting agenda. How dare you hijack a radio station I work at? This is how Marion Webster defines nationalism, a feeling that people have of being loyal to the way and proud of their country, often people believe that it, and in this case, America is better and more important than other nations. By the way, that I am white is due to my parents creating me as I am. You, sir, have embarrassed yourself. Issue number two, your participation in the protest at the White Contempt Center in Santa Falls is a more egregious concern. Saturday's Waukesha Call, written by Mr. Nato, featured the article which mentioned your quote at the end of said article. And I quote, "After the White Board ended its meeting, Waukesha City Councilman Alex Kipnis was among the protesters following them out." Quote, "I am here to support all the people who have been organizing against the operations of this prison," unquote, he said. There is a provision in our city charter that I'm sure you should have been permitted by now. Chapter 16 entitled Miscellaneous Provisions, Article 7, Organizations, Section 1, Employees' Right to Join. The right of municipal employees to join any organization of their choosing except those which are subversive or which deceive to overthrow duty, constitute government by force or violence, shall not be denied." Strike two, Alex. In the words of our football players, which were an own season, "You are in deep territory and you've got two penalties against you." Don't fumble. I'm J.R. and I approve this message.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item of business.
How many of you got a speaker in that mic? My name is Charles Moore, 174 St. Pankin Street, Waukesha, Red Eye, on 285. Went to a meeting last Wednesday night and they told, it was about if we wanted to, for one, you have a valuation to find out how you can try to fight if you don't like their valuation. Oh, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, 45 days, first time we pay our first taxes in the year. And my question is, I'm home most of the time, 22 hours, 20 hours to 22 hours a day because I have to deal with my wife most of the time and nobody came to my house. So I just wanted to put that up. And the other thing is, why wouldn't they send us a letter? Shouldn't it be registered letter? That way you know who got the letter and who didn't get the letter. You know, it may cost a whole lot, but most of the time when you get a registered letter, you go pick it up and you sign for it. You know, I think that should be one of the options of future years for the valuations. So I just figured I'd mention that to you. Thank you very much, Lady Hurd.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council?
Actually, I'd just like to make one more address. It'll be very brief. Now, earlier we heard a definition of nationalism according to Marion Webster Dictionary, but what was important to remember is that it was white nationalism. Now, per Wikipedia, white nationalism is a type of nationalism or pan-nationalism which espouses the belief that white people are erased and seeks to develop and maintain a white national identity. So essentially it's trying to say that America is an entirely white nation, it should only be a white nation. Now, when I served in the Navy for five years, I had a lot of time to sit around and think about what kind of country I wanted to protect and serve. And it was not one that places one race or a group of people above another. It is a country where we are all to be equal. And the idea of forging some white ethno-state out of, you know, the multicultural fabric of America is appalling to me and it should be to all of you.
Next item on the agenda is approval and correction of the minutes in the regular meeting held August 5th.
Council President.
Councilman, Vice President Breen.
There are no additions, corrections or deletions, I move that from meeting, uh, the minutes be, except that present.
Motion made by Councilman Breen, seconded by Councilman Sucey. Any comments, changes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and a minute to approve, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Motion made by Councilman Breen, seconded by Councilman Ward. Any items to be taken up individually?
Yes, could you please take up 19CO48 separately?
We will approve the consent agenda with the exception of 19CO48. Any other items to be taken up individually? On the remainder of the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, 19CO48.
That's Madam Clerk, if you please, Michael.
At the record reflect that Councilwoman Sierra has produced herself, are there any other issues to be brought up regarding 19CO48? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, 19CO48 is received and placed on file. Communications and petitions, Council President.
Councilman Kipnis. I would like to make a motion to move 19R104 and 19R105 out of order. Let's do 100, 104 and 105. Out of my motion. Motion made by Councilman Kipnis, seconded by Councilman Sucey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and 19R100 is before us. All those in favor?
19R100, grant permission to use city property.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilman Breen, seconded by Councilman Ward and Councilwoman Sierra. Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, 19R100 is approved, seven to zero. And that just for republics, it was a, the 10 dates for the next year's Levitt Amp Concert Series. I'm sorry? Just 100, 104 and 105.
19R104, grant permission to use city property.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Sucey, comments? There was a request to change the date, Madam Clerk, can we change the date here or is it something that? So if we amend the section, well, the whereas and section one to reflect October 24th. Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Kipnis and Councilwoman Sierra. Comments on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution 19R104 is before us as amended. On the main motion, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and 19R104 is approved, seven to zero as amended.
19R105, grant permission to use city property.
Motion to approve. Motion made by Councilman Kipnis, seconded by Councilman Ward, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, and 19R105 is approved, seven to zero, which is the Holiday Stroll. Going back to the regular agenda, communications and petitions.
19CP22, request of Rich Moncaro to address the city council redog and follow in item 1, tax evasion, exemption, new for owners of condominiums, specifically Tower Heights condominiums, and I would like Rich Moncaro to take care of this.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Everybody, for lunch. The, uh, in, I think I'm going to shorten this, Madam Clerk and councilmembers, just to keep it brief, brief, because I know you have a full agenda tonight. But the first item that I'd like to address is tax evasion for owners of condominiums. In specific, I happen to be the president of the Tower Heights Condominium Association, which is on 78 St. Joseph Street in Waukesha. And we're a 17-unit residential condominium association owned and owned by individuals, taxed at a residential tax rate. And as a 17, as our 17-unit owners have asked me to address the council in this specific matter, in the case of us, Tower Heights Condominiums, we pay for waste removal, $3,744 a year. That equates to $220.24 per residential condominium unit. I happen to also own and live at 156 Earl Street in Waukesha, a residential property in my tax rate, which is based off the same dollars per square foot, if you will, in the same classification of residential properties, and I think that's what's important, I get trash collection, it's built into the rate. Condominiums are not. Our condominium building only has 30 feet of street frontage, one water main coming in, one sewer line going out, it's then divided into separate water meters on our property. So the city, to their benefit, and this is Agostino, and this is fine folks, don't have to worry about 17 water meters, 17 water mains, 17 sewer lines going in and out. We also only have approximately 30 feet of street frontage. So if all 17 residential units were spread out across the city, across a street, there'd be more streets to maintain, more curvings, more sidewalks, more snow plowing, et cetera, et cetera.
et cetera, et cetera. The, what I'm asking for, on behalf of the condominium association, is your consideration to, and I believe you guys already had, you good folks already had a workshop session some many months ago on this, I don't know what happened after that, but we're asking that perhaps you consider creating an exemption for condominium owners to apply for, such as we do for veterans exemptions, and we thank the city for allowing us to have a veterans exemption, those of us that are. But I think the point here is trying to equalize and not penalize folks that live in a condominium. You know, it's not fair for us to subsidize every other residential property when we're taxed at the same rate per thousand that they are. So that's, believe it or not, you all have copies of this. Madam Clerk, sorry, it's, I started in the agenda, I'm taking up almost one full sheet of paper. So I'm going to pass, Madam Clerk, on item two, and council members, the dog pot, it is spelled out what I was going to speak about, I think you have a good sense to figure that one out, obviously you don't need Madam Clerk telling you what to do, how to think. I would like to speak very briefly on the topic number three, which is the Stadium Theater as a replacement parking and potential municipal revenue. Again, just food for thought, if it hasn't already been thought about. The city owns a municipal lot across the street, right behind the little car dealership that's over there, Terry Steyer. It could make some sense if we could get funding to build a parking garage there and dodge for parking. I know my friends at Stadium Theater, Mr. Poitiers probably doesn't want to hear about paying for parking, but it's a thought. Or perhaps if you could just sell that lot to the Stadium Theater, they can get grants or some type of contribution and do it themselves. But that probably would alleviate a parking issue that I know they have when they have theater programs going on. I haven't known before very quickly, and is, I know, I think on the agenda is something about selling the fireworks. I'd like to very briefly touch upon for attending non-permitted aerial fireworks within the city limits. And I think the most recent Fourth of July holiday period, I don't know where you folks live, but I know where I live, and it was eight, nine, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, ninety people shooting off fireworks that would compete against what the city pays for, for displays. I think there's going to be some type of a regulation passed that would allow the police department, and it's not a high topic, I get it, the chief and these good folks have done a heck of a job just trying to keep other bigger issue items under control, but it's, again, a quality of life issue, I guess, in the city. I'd like to see it restricted to at least not after 9:00 p.m., and then enforced if people perhaps do that. The fifth and final item, and I'll be brief on this also, is the downtown Wazaki library. Nice group, nice group of folks doing a great job, they're always in the paper, they're always got some activities going on, and I don't believe that their job is to attract businesses and develop the downtown area. I know that they work hand in hand, and by everything that they do, it's helping the city move forward in that direction. But I think there's the possibility of having a Main Street rebranding study done by somebody. Perhaps Bryant College, perhaps some other non-profit educational facility would take that on, and just look at what we have in the Main Street area for buildings, for businesses, for potential to have businesses. Are small cafes and restaurants really going to fly in the city? I don't know. I hope that they would over tattoo parlors and empty storefronts that we have now. God knows when Don knows who's out, it would be another vacant building. So I'd like to see something considered to go in that direction. And that's it, and thank you for the time. Thank you all.
Thank you.
19CP23, request of Councilman Kipnis to address the following items. One, thanking my supporters and those who helped me on my 2019 campaign for special election to the city, to the Wazaki City Council, and the population of Wazaki at large.
So yeah, I just wanted to really quickly say thank you to all the people who made my appearing in the election possible. Most people probably don't know, but it's not remotely easy to run a good campaign, especially not in the summer for a municipal special election for a single seat. So I'm incredibly thankful to my friend, campaign manager Keith, who can be here today, to my closer friends and advisors, to my family, to the organizations that supported me, to all the new friends that I met along the way, and to people of Wazaki for our making. Okay, so I'll just continue with Keith. So the second item, and I think that there may have been this communication, because I believe that there's a gentleman here who's going to speak on this issue, and I was preserving time to be able to speak after him, is am I able to give him some of my time? The issue of Mandeville, the recent accident on Mandeville Road.
Well, generally, if an individual wants to speak to the council, like Mr. Montero, did they even put themselves on the agenda? If while you were talking in one of your items, a counselor wanted to talk about, it is on the council agenda, but we don't usually allow the public to come up and speak on items after council good wel, I mean after citizens' good welfare is done.
Okay.
So you do have the time to speak about the traffic accident, but you really can't bring somebody up.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so they didn't put themselves on for the next agenda, similar to Mr. Montero.
Okay, I will, sorry about that, I will recount the information as best as I know. So there was a recent accident on Mandeville Road, I think about three weeks ago, this individual's wife is in pretty serious condition, broke a lot of, she broke a lot of bones, and it was on the intersection of Mandeville and Willow Street, I believe. And so this individual is requesting that we look, you know, we do a safety study for that area, that intersection, and figure out the possibility of some sort of either stop sign or speed bumps on the road, or some sort of, you know, local redesign of that area, because I believe there have been a series of accidents in that area. So that's something that I will communicate to the public safety director, and I just, this was a miscommunication on my part, I intended for us to speak there for good welfare, I meant for us to have time to discuss what he brought up. But I'll make sure that the follow-up on that follows this meeting, and I'm hoping that we can finally increase the safety in that area, because it's pretty tragic, for traffic, speaking of what happened.
It's probably not good to wait till next month, you know what I have to say?
If I could, Mr. President.
Chief?
That's, first of all, this, the accident was a horrible accident, and we've taken immediate action since then, we have put speed patrols out there, we have speed sleds out there. The same that I did with the road safety assessment study that was done downtown after the pedestrian was struck, that study for the downtown improvements, that's coming out, I met with them again last week, that's coming out within the next two weeks. I mentioned that this is my second meeting with them, the problem on Mandeville Road was speeding, potentially road design, crosswalks, they are going to the state DOT has a company that they hire that does these consulting work, that's sort of been preliminary discussions about those. So there is activity that's going, there is activity that's going on, we take it seriously whenever anyone gets injured like that and try and hit the road for this.
The chief has been very helpful. But I left him a message.
Yeah, so I would say just that, we'll follow up offline, and there's a lot of work being done outside of the council, and we'll make sure that that gets resolved.
I just don't want to see anybody like that again, there's kids that go to that school down there, they cross that road every day.
The councilman understands, he's going to get work now, councilman, and we'll talk offline. Sorry again, I'm not going to understand it.
So the next item that I wanted to bring up, I put this communication on the agenda because it's an issue that we need to discuss with regularity and clarity, and it should inform our decision-making. And this discussion today is just the start, and it's by only in three means intended to be in the lead. The climate is in crisis, we're in crisis. June and July were the hottest due to July on record in human history. And as a governmental body, it's our responsibility to act with it, to act within our jurisdiction to do our part, to face this crisis head-on, and decarbonize our economy. The IBC's special report published in October 2018 found that, and I'm quoting, "Limiting global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius would require rapid and far-reaching transitions in land, energy, industry, buildings, transport, and cities. Global net human-caused emissions of carbon dioxide would reach a fall by about 45% by 2010 levels by 2030, reaching net zero around 2050." Climate change is caused largely by human activity, or entirely by human activity, largely by the emissions of fossil carbon dioxide through our use of coal, oil, and gas for energy and improper agricultural land management. In a production system that is controlled and held in a very destructive state by wealthy, politically powerful fossil fuel corporations, who purported right to reap maximum profits, they and many politicians consider more important than the livability of the future and the long-term survival of human species. What's more, this is an issue that affects certain communities to a greater extent than others. People experiencing poverty, communities of color, the elderly and very young, those with disabilities, and members of other marginalized groups are affected more severely by heat waves and extreme weather events, epidemics, and the need to migrate due to shifting climate and sea level rise. As a largely working-class community, Wazaki is uniquely at risk of the short and long-term effects of climate change. It's the responsibility of governments at every level to face this crisis head-on, acknowledge the issue, identify political and economic levers over which we have control, develop plans to decarbonize and adapt on the timeline demanded by the most up-to-date science, and do all of this in a way that improves people's lives and grows the economy. We need to have structural change, not individual. And that's an important point, because if we do this correctly, the process of decarbonization and climate adaptation can help our community and our economy. As one of the speakers said earlier, which I know she brought up, this is what the Green New Deal seeks to accomplish. And if we do this correctly, we can make Wazaki become a model for other post-industrial cities to follow suit. So what will this look like? That's something that we must urge ourselves to figure out going forward regularly. But at first glance, addressing a climate crisis head-on means incorporating decarbonization and climate resiliency and adaptation into our urban planning, expanding and incentivizing public transportation, and designing towards waterability and microability, preventing the destruction of forests for the sake of unneeded development, something that the city has thankfully already begun, that thing of resent. Opposing any potential fossil fuel development here or anywhere where we have any sort of lever of jurisdiction, lever power, excuse me, stopping the use of fossil fuels overall and decarbonizing our energy, including solar, our every city building, and decarbonizing our homes and businesses, and working with responsible renewable energy developers to construct projects and create jobs and economic growth in our city, projects like the one that the city had been discussing in the past couple of months. Extending and incentivizing energy efficiency throughout the city, cleaning up our local environment and Blackstone River, and working towards the concept of democratized energy generation and distribution, which includes ideas like we use with utilities and generation. And this also means actively supporting the growing social movement of people fighting for serious climate action, supporting the climate strike that young people around the world are participating in this Friday, when they strike from work and school, and ongoing efforts by youth groups and by other climate groups to really make sure that we address this problem at the scale and on the timeline that's demanded by the best science we have. So we've begun some of this work, and that's really, really great. And we need to continue quickly with our eyes on the target of full decarbonization in the next couple of decades. And that means regularly acknowledging the magnitude of the crisis that we're facing and acting in ways that work to solve that crisis over the shortest time period possible. So that's all I have for today, and I think that this is, these are ongoing discussions between many different people in our government, but this is something that's very important, as very important to people in Wazaki, very important for our future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Council President? Councilman, I just, excuse me, I just made a few comments on this subject. I think Councilman Kipnis sort of has interest in this, but I do have to respond a little bit to some comments from Mr. Kipnis's friend from the Tuckett, suggesting there was some type of disagreement or pushback on any of this. And I just want to make it to be clear, and again, Councilman Kipnis did in fact refer to it. There are a number of things that this city, broadly speaking, has been doing in this regard. We, you know, elected to purchase fifty-four acres to remain open space out of Holly Springs. We were involved in renewable energy projects that we agreed with Green Energy Development LLC back in June, we're trying to put up another RFP for a potential site over at the river's edge. The majority of this council, a year and a half, two years ago, denied water to the fossil fuel plant in Boroughville. So I don't want anybody to think that people have their heads in the sand over these issues and are in any way, shape, or form at odds with some of these issues. I think it's clear, clear to me anyways, that a number, you know, a number of things are in fact being done, and I look forward to Mr. Kipnis coming back with a little more granularity on specific action items as opposed to some of the broad things we're talking about here, to have, you know, specifically what actions we can take to address some of these concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the...
Council President.
Councilman Breen.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Title 42, Chapter 46, Sub B of the relevant general laws regarding open meetings, and that would allow us to, with a majority vote, to add to the agenda anything that we wanted to add, so long as it's for informational purposes and may not be voted on, so I can give you a copy of this particular statute. But at this time, I would like to make a motion to add to the agenda the following item, a status updated discussion on the various renewable energy products and initiatives the city has been pursuing.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Breen, seconded by Councilman Canoyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Councilman Breen?
Thank you very much. I just want to kind of, and kind of piggyback on what Councilman Kipnis said and what Councilman Canoyer said. And I know that prior to tonight, there had been some discussions of whether or not, how this body would work together. We've got a new councilman, we've got a new, basically a fully constituted council, and there was concern of us not working together, and I don't think that that is the case at all. In fact, there was talk about the actions of our new councilman and courageousness of the new councilman taking on climate change and renewable energy within the city. We had an election, we turned the page, we worked together, we're on the same council, and all I can say at this point, I can only judge on what I've seen and what's been done. So I invite you, Councilman Kipnis, to join in support of the good work done by this council, done by the previous council, and work with us as we move forward with the renewable energy initiatives that we have done and the work we've done, and I'm going to go over some of those things tonight. It was stated by someone in the audience earlier that she would hope that there was serious consideration given to renewable energy. Well, there hasn't, and let me give you a brief history of where we are. On April 3rd, 2017, this council established a renewable energy subcommittee at the time, thus proving, by the way, that we were talking about green before the hip idea of the Green New Deal, so we were cool before that was cool. The mayor indicated there was no need for a subcommittee because she was already working on renewable energy. That still remains to be seen. We will forward to January 2nd, 2018, and we provided the administration with a draft renewable energy RFP for review and edit. March 19th, 2018, we instructed the administration to issue an RFP, and that was provided to the administration on January 22nd, 2018. April 2018, the administration issued that RFP with a response date of May 18th, 2018. There were some... There were some amendments, there was a bid conference, and we received several, sorry, seven formal responses. On July 2nd, 2018, the council unanimously requested that the Narragansett Bay Commission review those RFPs and bills and make recommendations. September 25th, 2018, Narragansett Bay Commission provided the subcommittee with a written report summarizing their findings. October 9th, 2018, the subcommittee down-selected to four respondents. October 15th, 2018, the city council has a whole call for a work session where four respondents would make a presentation. That work session took place on October 29th, 2018. The subcommittee subsequently selected green energy from that initial RFP on June 17th, 2019. And we instructed the administration to immediately begin contract negotiations with Green Development LLC. June 24th, 2019, I sent a letter to the mayor asking her for a list of sites that she would like to include in a list for, on a new RFP. I never received that list. On July 30th, 2019, we held a meeting. That meeting was entitled "An Update on Discussions with Green Development Pursuant to Resolution 19R71." The city solicitor at that meeting informed us that the administration had hired attorney Capizzo from Partridge Snow and Farm. Solicitor, you were informed at that point that there couldn't have been a hiring because there's a ordinance in place that says we have to approve that hiring. That time is of the essence and we needed to get green energy to kick off the negotiations. We needed to meet with them to kick off those negotiations. We also voted on a second RFP to be issued to seek proposal for River's Edge. On October 5th, just last month, this council provided the administration with a draft RFP, I'm sorry, on August 5th, just last month, the council provided the administration with a draft RFP to seek RFP for renewable energy projects at River's Edge, and instructed the administration to prepare to revise RFP and return it to the council by no later than August 26th. We never returned, we never got that response from the administration. I know this is a long and monotonous dissertation of what we've done, but we've given it serious consideration. We've been at this for over two years. That's an abbreviated summary. There have been more meetings, there have been more discussions, there's been more work. So now it's September 16th, and my first question is, where are we with Green Energy LLC? It's been three months since this council passed that resolution instructing the administration to begin negotiations, and we have nothing to show for it. So I guess, Solicitor, in your information, has there been at least a kickoff meeting? Has Green Energy been invited to City Hall? Has there been a sit-down between the mayor and Green and the parties of public works or engineering to sit down and have that discussion? Because that's where it would start, at least having the parties get together.
Well, the public works director is here tonight. He gives a, I don't know what means, or, you know, path to green energy and public works. As you know, on the agenda tonight is the hiring of an environmental lawyer who is going to review the bids and the bid for the energy, the project for the energy, and also meet with Green Energy and begin the negotiations. It would have happened sooner, however, we wanted to, the administration wanted to find a lawyer who specializes in environmental law, and I believe this gentleman does. He's on, he's on the agenda tonight, so I assume if the council approves it tonight, he will begin whatever negotiations are necessary to consummate the deal.
Has there been any direct evidence, you know of?
No.
No, okay. The same goes for River's Edge. I asked for a return on that RFP by August 26th. We haven't had anything. Do we know what that is, what the status of that RFP is? A draft?
I believe the mayor was going to have a meeting with Director Coit to see if this was possible before an RFP went out. And I don't know the findings of that. Who can, well, there, we're emailed up. And efficient, I believe the solicitor found some language somewhere that prohibited the use of solar. Did you know?
There is some language, you're talking about River's Edge, I guess, right now?
Yes.
There is some language in the D that prevents some restrictions, that it talks about certain restrictions on that land. But as soon as the environmental lawyer is hired, which is hopefully after tonight, that would be part of the environmental aspects that he's known for being doing for the city. And as you know, environmental is a very specialized field, and I think it's more prudent to have someone who does that on a daily basis.
So, these are all copies of all the legislation that we've passed as a body here in regard to this topic. And certainly, Solicitor, I know with the restrictions on property, it has to be, you know, respected, certainly, we know that. There was a, a, a Mansaka Call article on August 26th, and it was written by Russ Oliver, and it states, "Mayor Lisa Baldelli-Hart has hired an environmental lawyer to determine whether it's feasible to erect solar panel farms at any of the locations where the city council has instructed them to do." I found that interesting because, as we stated earlier, we had the first meeting on July 30th, in which we were told a attorney was getting hired, and we said we needed to have the very piece of legislation that's been for us tonight. And yet, on August 26th, we're told that the administration has already hired that environmental lawyer. We know that 17074, which is right here, says that that's not possible. That same day, I asked for a engagement letter.
If I may, Councilman, I want to cut you off, but when I said that, what I should have said was, the administration had chosen a lawyer that they would like to hire. Of course, we all know that pursuant to that legislation, a lawyer for a non-defense-related issue has to come before the council. But, you know, based on the research that I had with you and the subcommittee, we were very eager to have a lawyer get chosen, but it did take, my understanding is it did take some time to find a lawyer who was going to do that and who specialized in that, and that's why he's on the agenda tonight.
And I appreciate that, but I wasn't talking more about what you said, Solicitor. I was talking about that the mayor was quoted in a Mansaka Call saying that the city has hired an environmental lawyer to determine whether it's feasible to erect solar panels at any of the locations that we've instructed the administration to do so. There was no engagement letter. I asked on August 26th, I never received a response.
Councilman. You don't mind?
I don't.
Okay. You can't always believe what you read in the paper. You believe?
Well, then I can't always believe what the mayor says in the paper. This is her quote.
Fair enough. But you can't believe that there's a revolution tonight to hire an environmental lawyer.
And I understand that.
Okay. That's what you can't believe.
And I understand that, and I'll get, I'll get to that more. So, this is the, so right here, so let me go, let me go back to this article. It says that the mayor stopped short of issuing an absolute blockade against the redevelopment of River's Edge, saying she booked the lawyer Christian Capizzo for advice and recommendations. Capizzo specializes in environmental land use law, and the mayor said that he will take a look at the feasibility of all the sites filed to date where the council has either directed the administration to develop solar panels or has instructed the administration to seek a bidder to do so. So yes, that is on the agenda tonight. And I note that on page two, section one, sub B, it says, "Christian Capizzo, $365 an hour. From time to time, other professionals, partners, $350 to $575. Senior council and up council, $195 to $550 an hour. Council, $315 to $500 an hour." Now, why do I bring that up? Because this is up in front of us later on tonight, and I don't know that I can support a piece of legislation in which we're going to be paying someone $375 an hour to basically review the work we've done and say whether or not we can actually do what we've done. We can do what we said is going to happen. We've approved it. We've instructed the administration under the charter to take this action. So to hire someone to assess the feasibility of what we've already approved, I can't support paying that kind of money to basically be told, well, we hired a lawyer and he said he can't do it. That's not the purpose for which we're hiring the lawyer. We're hiring a lawyer to get the job done, to finish the negotiations. We're three months in. By this point, we could have had a power purchase agreement going at bare minimum and been looking to see what we have to do for site prep. But instead, it's three months later and it seems to me that there's been roadblock after roadblock, and we're not paying someone to assess the feasibility of the sites. We're paying them to close the deal. That's number one. Number two, in addition to hiring Capizzo for advice, the mayor says she is still seeking input from the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management on whether River's Edge is suitable for a solar farm. Well, I could save us $375 an hour, no problem, because right here on the internet is East Providence landfill doubles solar energy output. There's Janet Coit right there in this picture, basically saying in this article that the Fort Street solar array, which has doubled in size, largest in the state, is on a municipal landfill that operated between 1970 and 1980. The panels are affixed to above-ground battists, in all 2,212 tubs of cement, anchor the panel brackets. Now, hold on, I'll save us the money for the attorney. Janet Coit, Director of the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, called the project "a shining example of excellence." You were the first out of the gate. You were the ones who really showed that a major solar array can go on a landfill. I just saved us a bolt of light. North Providence Solar Landfill Project taps into Rhode Island incentives. This is from February 5th, 2019. The project will help the town power municipal and school buildings and tap into three monetary streams: land lease payments, tax revenue, and energy savings. That should sound familiar because that's what we're trying to accomplish here. We would have been on the way by now, and it seems like obstructionism. It does. I have here three different consultants, all of which, Director, you said to, you said to this body, and I agree with you, and I gave you our word, that you said you were going to make sure that the city was protected when we got into this deal, and we did this during contract negotiations. I said at that time, "If need be, the city council will hire a consultant," which we have the power under the charter to do, "to hire a consultant to get this done." I have the names of three different consultants right here from three incredibly reputable companies, all of which have worked with municipalities to close solar energy deals. In fact, one of the companies stresses a quote from former town manager of West Lord, Fred Presley, who says that this one consultancy helped them to deliver a zero-cost, below-market power purchase agreement, get $700,000 in grant funds, and they're the only municipality in the state that is fully, that is fully powered by renewable energy. It's easy. It's all reviewed. The scope of engagement on that ordinance that we have tonight, the resident, yeah, the ordinance that we have tonight for the, I'm sorry, the resolution for the hiring of the, of the attorney, I can't support it under the scope that it is because we're told in the Mansaka Call that the purpose of bringing this dialogue is to basically make sure that the work that we've already done over two and a half years is okay. And it is. So I want to get this done. I want to get the RFP out for River's Edge, and I want to move forward because that's how you make a city sustainable using green energy, Councilman. So get on board with us. We're moving forward, and I want this project to move forward. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Ward, you wanted to?
I just wanted to add one item that I don't know whether you're Councilman aware of, and sometimes seems like a small thing that may have been forgotten, but related to, related to energy and clean energy. On March 4th of this year, this council passed a resolution that designated this city as a pace community and signed a C-Pace agreement, which has to appropriately assess clean energy program participation that is financed through the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, and so corporations can use the infrastructure bank to finance renewable energy equipment for their business in the city. And the city is a participant there, so any commercial business, I would assume, should contact the infrastructure bank if they have space on their roof or they have other clean energy systems that they're looking to incorporate it to the business. They're excited to do that, and we're a participating community. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, Council Goodwin. Council President. Is this, so, is this still during my communication petition?
No. No, Councilman Green added an item to the agenda for an update, if you will, for the renewable energy. So it's a separate agenda item.
And was Councilman Ward's reply also part of that?
Yes.
So are council members free to?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, and so I applaud the council for their work, and I would merely point out again that the point of the communication petition was to address this area of the crisis. And I am, in that, in that communication, the urging is to do more of what has already, what has already been done. And so I'm excited to work on all of that.
Well, it seems like you're already buying into the work we've begun, so thank you. Thank you much. Any other comments before we move on? Now, Council Goodwin.
Councilman Kinnoyer.
Pass.
Councilman Kinnoyer.
Pass.
Councilwoman Sierra.
Pass.
Councilman Sucey.
I, just a couple of quick things I want to congratulate you, Alex, on your victory. Hard fought, and a lot of time added, and congratulations to you and good luck. And also to reiterate the, the grand marshal assessment coming up on September 28th honoring Mr. House of Peril, most worthy grand marshal and folks out there who participate in that 28th at Commodore. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Ward.
Thank you, Adam Clark. Two things, just as announcements, I did attend the session that former Council President Green sponsored or organized at the Els Club last Wednesday. It was informative and I think beneficial for those people who attended. Want to point out too that the company, a representative of the firm-